7:02, I want to open the meeting tonight for the Dunbar and Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, April 12th. We have two selectmen here, one is, so I say he cannot attend tonight, and I'm in his room here. Town officials, we have the road agent present, and we also have recording tonight is Mr. Leo Martell. Okay Dave, we get some minutes from last week, only public minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the April 5th, 2018 meeting minutes as amended.
And I'll second that. And I just want to have a discussion, I read over the Jeff's, Jeff Trexler's report on DS, if anyone's got it. And I was just looking at these numbers here, and I just want to point out to you, remember he said there was like 1 million, almost 60,000?
Yeah.
But it looks like, it looks like SAU 19 was not the only one doing accounting practices that would be questionable. So I think there's may have been a potential problem with SAU 67. And I just want to make sure that, I don't think of a recommendation that they look at that to make sure it doesn't happen again, because it looks like there's some funds, whether they came from Govstown over, or they're from the SAU 67 directly, they're withholding funds. But there was a, it looks like there could have been a problem with SAU 67. And those funds should have been returned at the end of the-
School year.
School year, yeah, so, I don't know, we might, I just might point that out to the school board chair.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts to do that.
Just so we can, but that was, I thought that was interesting in the draft, because again, it's two SAUs mentioned with that dollar figure he proposed. And it's three years since we've been with the SAU 67 that they withheld dollars. Where are the dollars coming from, as you said? Are they could be from SAU 19 transferred over, or they were withholding from both too, doing the same problem?
It could just be from the Govstown portion of that new agreement.
Yeah.
We should at least check into that and make sure that they do look at it.
Okay, I might check with, I'll just give Jeff Trexler a chat on that one. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. They provided a lot of information there.
It's been the smallest group yet.
Okay, I'm gonna open a public comment.
Nothing.
No public comment?
No, I got nothing.
Okay, and then I'm gonna go right to, bring it back to the board again. And we have a couple donations from the Old Home Day Committee.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept a $25 donation per RS 831:95-B, room number 3B for the Old Home Day Committee.
Any amount of?
Twenty-five.
Okay. I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, I'll make the second one, per RS 831:95-B, room number 3, per, I accept donations for the Dunbar Energy Committee, amount of $50.
I'll second your motion.
Discussion, I just want to put, that was probably some money that came in at the last minute. I did kudos to the Dunbar Energy Committee, they had a good showing. I went, I attended for a short while, and it was more than double the vendors from last year, more than double the people from last year. And I thought it was well received by a ton of people walking, I even saw Lynn there. And a lot of people were there, so kudos to the Dunbar Energy Committee. All in favor of accepting this bit of money?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I'm gonna go out of order.
You are?
Jeff, I'm gonna let you, I mean, I'd like to have you chime in, because you're not on the agenda, but the thing is, I like to just, as a follow from last week.
Okay.
Just, there was, there was one question about the progress on the Stark-
You want to wait till Bob comes back next week to talk about it, or?
I hate to have him miss out on it.
Oh, I think-
Because he's always pretty interested.
We'll make him watch your video.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll be comfortable with that. I just hate, because he's always asking, so I hate to have him miss out on it.
That's okay.
The Stark Bridge, I talked to Mike Hanson, Hanson Bridge, earlier this week, to touch base with him, see where he was at with it. And move him back in at some point next week.
Next week.
I don't know exactly what day, I didn't pin him down to what exact day. Which actually is gonna work out good, our road postings will be done, the 16th, we're gonna remove them.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to be disobeying our own rules.
And that was brought up too, that was probably another limiting factor with-
Well, it was, because they're heavy loads, but there was some of it, he could have done a little bit, but-
Okay.
The temperature was the biggest problem.
Okay.
With the temperature issue, of course, he's not, he isn't sitting at home waiting for this job to, you know, happen. He's got several projects at different phases.
Very good.
So-
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. While we got you Jeff, are you coming back to us a little later in the spring to give us, like, an update of how many other roads you're gonna work on in time like you normally do, or?
Usually you hold a public, a public hearing where you talk about priorities.
I schedule that.
Oh.
So I will be working on that.
We've, we've talked about it.
Typically we shoot for the end of April, and I'm a little behind schedule.
We and I have been talking about it.
So I, I need to get 14 days notice in the newspaper.
I didn't know we had to put the pressure on Lynn. No, we, her and I have been talking about it, and she's got a- Okay, so you aren't planning to do one?
We have to do it.
I didn't know if you, because you're gonna be scaling down some of your work this year. No, we always do that, because it kind of puts everybody on town, in town on notice, that we're gonna be doing some work. And that way they can, we didn't know you were gonna do this, it pretty much just encompasses all of town at different levels, so, yeah, we've worked-
It allows the public to give input to it.
And she, Lynn has, like, she posted 14 days of different things going on, it just hasn't happened yet. The other thing is, we cleaned that tree up at the school.
Yes.
Pete and I had a chance to do it this week, so we snuck in there, cleaned it up, and removed it.
Oh, good, thank you.
There were a couple other trees that janitor had, some concerns with it, broken off one in the woods. And we knocked that down, cut it down, knocked it down, got it on the ground so it wouldn't fall. Because it's near a path that I guess the kids use, he said.
Okay.
So I told them, we're gonna clean it up, we'll just leave it lay on the ground, so we got that down. And another dead one that he has some concern. So why we were right there with it.
And have they been coordinating with you as far as the road usage?
Yeah, yeah, they pour their concrete, I guess they got all their concrete, footings walls and all that poured. So they're probably gonna start backfilling at some point.
Very nice.
In the near future and then finish it up, but Monday we decided we're gonna, you know, pull out with restrictions.
Okay.
Even though it's not optimum weather, but across this-
You don't just bring any more snow?
Well, it's, it's pretty dry actually, really, for-
Well, this weekend's gonna be very wet.
Yeah, but I mean, overall, you know, sides of the road and stuff, it was dry than it has been for some years, but-
And I have one more thing for you, an email came in, just that they have a summit for the road agents.
The summit?
A summit where they have the vendors come in and show who wears-
Oh, yeah, but in the ski area, right about-
Did you get that notice?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I'm not sure if you were interested.
I usually don't go.
Okay. You get free admission, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, sometimes it's some neat stuff, but most of it's just, you know, equipment.
Understood.
It's a get-together type of thing.
Okay. Thing is, I wanted to front-load you so you didn't have to wait, that's why.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And since Leo had the question on the, on the, on the bridge last week, did, I think he answered most of your questions?
Yeah, actually, I was just remarking, because Gail and I went to look at it.
Yeah.
Just remarking that they were gonna be taking the signs down shortly, so they'd be back to work.
Yeah, no.
That's, that's all I mentioned last week.
Yeah, so it's a-
Then, then the crowding came up, and I said, well, at this point, I'm sure they can do it.
And so it has been also acknowledged.
Yeah, right.
Great.
That's all I was-
Yeah, we thought last week, you know, just sometimes a quick call to get it started back up, which you already did. Sometimes that helps. He's done everything he's told me, he said around the middle of April, and it got to be this week, so I gave him a call Monday and said, hey, Mike, what are you up to? Well, I didn't actually give him a call, I drove to his other job to see him. Hey Lynn, your carpenter's here if you want to bring him in. Let us know how he did on the door. Hold for a second, and he was, that's what he told me, and he actually, we talked, and he said, give me a call before the end of the week, and he actually called us today, told us his plan.
Okay.
I said, that's good.
Can, can I ask a question? So how, how long do you think it's gonna be Jeff? I mean, I don't care, I'm just curious.
I, you know, I don't really know Leo, I didn't pin him right down, but he said, once they get the footings in and out of the water, it's a pretty fast process.
Yeah, right, I would imagine, yeah.
We did have a date, I don't know what it said on his contract at this point, but, what was it, the end of June or something, it was-
Yeah, I don't, I can't remember exactly.
They would like a date. These are the sort of-
And things on a personal note, thank you to your family for basically selling a piece of property.
Oh, yeah, that, I, yeah, we were pretty happy with the way that worked out. I mean, it was, I think it's good for everybody.
Okay, for the record, I think your mom sustained solely a piece of property for the town.
Town forest, and, well, it's to town, yes.
Right, to the town forest, and it's a win-win.
Yeah.
So, I just want to say thank you, I was, I helped sign the paperwork this weekend, went through very smoothly.
Forty-one acres, I believe, approximately 40 acres on Route 77.
Nice.
And it abuts something they already own, the town forest, so they should be able to get a good timber cut and-
Yeah, yeah, I don't know all of that logistics and what it exactly abuts, but it abuts other conservation land.
So, thank you again.
Yeah, no, well, it worked out good.
As I said, win-win.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else for us?
Nope, I'm good.
Have a great day.
Yeah, you too, guys.
Okay, why?
So, I, Dave just noticed that Ryland was just pulling through the parking lot, and I called him earlier to have him come in and look at the problem we were having with the entrance of the door, so he can-
Yeah, that drive lock's been an issue. I'm gonna, I think we're gonna have somebody from the manufacturer come over here, I feel like it's not right. I have issues with that door, they-
Did you get it to function at all, Ryland?
Yeah, yeah, it works perfectly right now.
Okay.
The problem is in the back end where the pushfire is, I don't think the bolt's a little bit loose, as soon as it's on real tight, like I had it, it locks up with a key for her, and she can't get in there. It's secure, it doesn't jiggle or anything like that, and it works smooth itself right now.
Yeah.
I still, I have an issue with that, I don't, I don't feel that it's right.
Yeah. I sure have an issue with it. When I went over to try it, I think, was it yesterday Lynn?
Yeah.
When you put in on the hold-in device there for the door to stay unlocked.
Yeah.
The function on the left side of the panic works fine, but the one over in the lock mechanism is turning, turning high.
The hex?
Yeah, the hex thing, so I'm thinking that might be part of it in there.
Yeah. It's been a nightmare as far as that door, everything I've been able to control has been going very smoothly.
Yeah.
From day one.
Did you get the Trexler word, I, I put it aside?
I did see those over there.
Okay.
And that keep plate's on order, it's supposed to be on Monday.
Okay.
Has not been. I haven't had to die with last road lately with library door stuff.
Ryland, are you, are you gonna look at the other panic device as well?
Yes. I'm hoping that comes in tomorrow, I just wanted to make a day of it. We're gonna box that out and order it there.
Yeah.
We're just going to, I did walk out with Mike, I just walked out the other day. We're just going to score that, going to take the threshold off, existing threshold, as we talked about.
And what about the through bolts for that existing closer?
Yeah, yep. There's a carriage bolts, we'll put that right through.
Yeah.
You're talking about the other door edge?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. So, one, one more of three major things.
Yeah, Mary knows everything that has to be done, so I'm sure she'll stay on top.
Yeah.
You can even say, hey, did I miss anything?
The only thing I, if you're coordinating with Mary.
Yeah, I usually do.
Just make sure, if you can't make it, get a phone number to let her know what's going on.
Yeah.
She was a little, I think she came in early to meet you the other day, and you didn't show up.
Oh, no, no, no.
There was a, there was a communication error.
I guess so.
Okay, so that's the only-
She told me after she had to hear from me, don't come-
I, I think, I recall you saying that too.
Yeah.
So the thing is, but she was concerned, I said, gee, I just, I'll just ask you to just make sure you communicate well with her, that's all. That's the only thing I asked her. So there's no, no one, no one did-
I'll stop back a little bit too and let her know, I've tried her something a couple times.
Okay. Ryland, I noticed on that panic on that middle door, if you push in from the backside, that panic works perfect every time.
Okay.
So I know it's not the panic function, but if you leave the door without that closer on it, it binds up every time you try and use it from that side, but if you-
Yeah, that's what I was on there too.
So if you make that closer so it operates as hard as possible, so it keeps that door pulled in, I think it will operate fine. But if not, the door up at the top of the stairs, which gets used almost never, has that same panic hardware on it.
Just drive more, okay.
So if we need to swap it on the two doors.
Right.
Or whatever, so that, we want that exit to work really good for that, because the library sometimes has 40 or 50 people on it.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, we make it work right. As far as when I walked in with Mike, I think you're right on cue with what you're saying, maybe the only adjustment needs to be on the strike, the plank, really easy, stupid.
But if you push in on that door, that panic works beautiful on it, and I'm not sure why it catches up, but I'm hoping the closer holding the door in will alleviate that from happening. If not, we have a whole identical setup right upstairs.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Okay.
All right, on the court.
Thank you for that.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'll fill seats tomorrow.
Thank you.
Great evening.
You too.
Okay, next on the agenda, I'm gonna review the application for, you said, the recording secretary?
Yeah.
I think it sounded pretty good.
I did, why don't you grab that there?
Sure.
I read the email and reviewed the minutes from this girl, is a recording secretary for other towns, or has been in the past. Their minutes look good, and it was the same fee that we were paying on the previous recording secretary, so, in my mind, it's kind of a win-win, because no matter who we use in house, it probably would be more expensive.
Right. Anything is in, thing is in deference to what you commented last week, I, I think we still ask the other, the incoming person to be as a backup.
Yeah.
And I think that we reserve her as a backup if she's willing to do it. And that way we're covered two ways.
Yeah.
So I'd say Lynn, let's, I'll, I'll make a motion that we hire Jennifer King as our recording secretary.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make it happen.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I want to say that was positive about this applicant, is she could make our meeting minutes like Bob wanted, and also, why don't you, I didn't talk to Bob, but you did talk to Bob.
We did.
Yeah.
So we talked to Bob, and he's all set within his block.
Yeah, so really, by consensus, we're all on board.
For us.
Yeah. That's great. Okay, I got some town business to talk to. Sergeant Romanard sent a little notice, he's gonna be looking at, they're gonna, at Page's Corner, they're gonna be doing some business up there, monitoring traffic. So it'll be, I think, I think a bigger significant, or a significant police presence on Page's Corner. Nothing's going on except monitoring traffic.
I think that's for that, the complaints that we've been getting for accidents and whatnot, right?
Right. They have to, they have to, okay. Okay, got an email from, from, what do you, transfer, he wants to bring someone in to shadow him next week, I'm not sure what that's about, do you have any more knowledge?
No, it's too, the email's not very clear. I don't think we've ever done that before, it, we have in case of individuals required to do community service for, you know, through the courts.
Right.
But that's the only time that we've had anyone really shadow.
Yeah, it looks like somebody wants to shadow his job, let's send him back an email Lynn, and just ask him if you can give us some more detail about, you know, why, or if they're in college, or high school, and maybe their age, so we'll know too, if we, if we do say.
That's cool.
It's okay.
Okay, we got another letter, I concur with that, just the, the information is not, there's not enough information on the email. Okay, we have a Unitil Preparedness Meeting, or Burnish Responsive Preparedness Meeting. I think this should be a-
I was thinking about attending that, Mike.
Okay, but should also be invited to a police chief and fire, fire chief too.
I think we each got one notice to us, they're all noticed separately.
Good.
I noticed that the three selectmen have, Lynn, did you see them for the other departments?
What's that?
The Unitil meeting that Conqueror?
Unitil breakfast at Verbone's, yeah.
No, I'm not.
Did you get one Jeff?
Yeah.
So they did get-
I've been going, I've been going with John last several years.
Okay, so the other departments probably did get them.
Yeah.
I thought about going to, it sounded a little bit interesting, and the end of town I live in is Unitil, so, I thought it'd be interesting to go to, I, I don't think if I lived in the public service side, I would go, but it'd be nice to see what their responses are on that.
It'd be interesting if they talk about any more their competition to Notre Pass, they have a different proposal. Grant State Power, they have a subsidiary of Unitil.
Oh, they are.
Okay, I have made a do and want to make sure they're all the same committee.
Okay.
I don't want to point someone to the wrong committee, they're all the same committee. We have three applications for the, for the Dunbar and Old Home Day Committee.
It's okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept and nominate the following people for the Dunbar and Old Home Day Committee. Mark Lang, with a term expiring on March 31st, 2019. Kenneth Corber, and his is March 31st, 2019. Allison Valleys, which is March 31st, 2019. And John Stevens, again, March 31st, 2019.
Second that. Any discussion?
Nope.
Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Sign the second line down, okay?
Thanks.
Why don't you be the top dog? I didn't date it, Mike, I don't know if you have it. I've been dating it.
Yeah. It's dated already.
Okay.
12, right? It's gotta be dated in this morning again. Let's go to Linda. Okay, I'm gonna open up.
I have a couple more things there, that wage scale right there is the individual elected official's wage scale. In the process of, I had you guys approve that rate change, and from 2017's tab to 2018 tab, I used the wrong line, so it ended up, I underpaid the tax collector and the town, the treasurer by a small amount, but in order for it to be legit and put it as part of my auditing documents, I just want to make sure that-
So either $20 adjustment and a $3.96 adjustment.
Who bought it?
Pam Malia.
Very nice. Do we have to vote on that, do we?
No. I think what happened is, I was working with keeping the old rates in there because of that Warren article, and then it just got, but I did get, you know, Linda, and then the other ones, I don't know why they're suspended, but we're all good.
Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment again.
Seems like this meeting's going pretty quick.
Bob's not here.
That's what I was, that's what I said, he must be, he must be the one dragging this thing through.
He, he rambles.
Yeah.
And if Bob's, we're gonna watch this, it's for you Bob.
All right. I do actually, now, we've gone around a little bit, I guess, I've got something. Have, has the, did they move to hire another individual transfer station with commercial CDL license?
Yes.
To alleviate?
We have someone on board right now.
Oh, I've seen a new gentleman up there, but I didn't-
Yeah, we hired two people there Jeff.
Didn't dare ask anybody if they had the CDL licenses.
One was specifically hired for the CDL.
Yeah.
So we should be expecting not to have to have Pete?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what we're hoping.
Unless, unless there's a catastrophic-
Yeah. Or he leaves us in the fall or something, but-
Well, yeah.
That would be done tunnel.
Oh.
He's already provided all his paperwork, he's in the system, what are you supposed to coordinate training with him on that equipment, because he has driven that type of vehicle?
Yeah.
Or truck.
I heard it was just one day. So we were trying to be proactive with that, because it wasn't impact last year, and it was, created a little bit of friction.
Well, that's why I just wanted to know. I haven't heard any more about it since last year, so.
It's gonna be that time of year.
Exactly. So now we have a full staff up there, and we're hoping to try to keep it that way, so that-
Yeah, but what I've learned about the transfer station though is, since we don't, it's not really a full-time benefited, a job with full-time benefits, it's always gonna be constant turnover.
Well, especially when you get the younger kids in there, because you want them to get a better themselves.
Exactly.
It's just a temporary thing.
And so what we-
Which is fine.
What we keep on file now, we have applications, which we keep on file, and so we just have to open the book again and post them out when we want to interview someone, and have them come in for interviews and move over.
No, I was just concerned about the trucker and the product.
Nope, that's, um-
I have a question, I had one of the new guys there that just started asking me for dump sticker. And other towns, you have to be, you know, you go through the town clerk or whatnot to get our dump stickers, how are we doing it in this town?
We do it at all the offices that are available, so primarily the selectmen's office and the town clerk.
Now-
And the transfer station.
They do, and the transfer, he offered me one, and I was amazed that he could offer it to me at the transfer station.
They have copies of the residence.
No, he didn't, I said, you know, I'm the selectman, he says, oh, you don't need one.
They, they keep an updated residence list to go by.
Okay.
Do you use Legate Hill Road?
Legate Hill Road? Nope, not to come over.
No, I meant for dumping.
I'm saying Legate's a little hard to pass right now.
I was gonna say, if not Kimball Pond?
Yeah.
How's Kimball Pond been over the road back there, have you seen much dumping evidence?
Not where, not where we maintain. We don't go too far off the beat path unless, unless somebody needs our assistance. It seems a little better, I think they're patrolling it a lot more than they used to, and I can't, like he said, I don't see anything that we see, I haven't gone around the backs either. The unfortunate thing, the town forest, which affects the town, is we have an awful lot of shooting that goes on at the Kimball Pond gravel pit now, and the people just leave everything out here, so it's really horrible. Chairs and buckets and all kinds. Now Jeff, I thought we were gonna put a sign up, didn't we talk about that last year? Well, yeah, we did, but police wanna go down there and practice shooting all the time, so.
Is that what police practice?
Yeah. They don't leave them, that's obviously, I'm not blaming our police, but it's the random people that go down there. But you know, even if we had a sign up there on public shooting, our town police officers should be able to go down there just by- We did that at Stark Spawn pit, because that was, the neighbors were really complaining over there about it, and we had the same issue there, and that eliminated it, it just about virtually eliminated all shooting whatsoever.
The sign?
Just by putting the sign up.
Well, they put it up twice.
Well, the first one wasn't high enough, someone took it down, the second one, we put up a liar.
Chief, Chief alluded to me there, he is, he wants the public, he likes the public to use that area, the, the one you're, the second one you referred to.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not the right thing to pinpoint that area to send everybody down.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my response would be- If you're gonna look at it, Mike, that area is a complete trash hole down there, it didn't use to be like that.
No.
There used to be a few things left down there, but right now, they carry it down, they're carrying it almost, what, a half a mile Jeff? It's, you can't access it unless you got an ATV. So you're walking down several hundred feet to where they can shoot, and they're hand carrying all this stuff down to shoot at, and then they just leave it all there when they leave. And it's not, it's, you know, it's simple stuff, you know, cotton flannels, you know, coffee cups, and, you know, cardboard boxes with the shells.
Toilet seats.
They just, yeah, whatever, they bring all kinds of items down, they shoot up. You know, I, I've heard there's been some people that have told other people that, hey, that's the place to go shoot.
Right, that's what Chief told me.
I've, I've heard that-
So we have a little, we have a little problem, it creates a little problem.
Well, I mean-
With litter.
The thing is, the town forest overseas, if they, we can eliminate the whole thing.
Gotcha.
And it may come to that.
I think that-
You know, eventually, because that's, we had a little pushback on the Stark Spawn one.
Right, right, right.
There were several meetings with the police chief and the selectmen that were in at that time, and we couldn't get any reaction, so we took it upon ourselves, we had a sign being put up, and it was like a light switch.
That's, that sounds like a, like an easy fix.
So it may come to that on- I'm gonna speak as a resident that hears it, because those shots go directly down towards my home on that side. You cannot sit, you can't sit there on a weekend, and, and you know, I have no problem with people sighting their gun in once a year to go hunting, or even a few shots, but when they go down there, they're going down there to shoot for a whole afternoon, and you just cannot get a break from it, there's no reprieve from it.
I, I agree with you, because what happens is, few people that want to have a good time are spoiling it for the people who, who just have some peace and quiet. They do have range, gun ranges where you could go and shoot.
We got pioneers right here in town.
Right, where you can go shoot, so, you know, you gotta let the neighborhoods have a break too, you know?
The neighbors, actually, I'm surprised, nobody in the neighborhood is complaining, actually.
Well, there aren't that many there though.
No, and they're, and you're on the downhill further away, so they're mainly spoilt travel stone, your house where it doesn't come up. You know, I've heard of complaint, not to me as a selectman, but just as a neighbor complaint, because it just, it doesn't really stop in the summer. Oh, no, I, I agree, we're really frustrated with the mess. I mean, it would be, wouldn't be quite as bad if they didn't have any mess. Actually, when we've been down in that area working, sometimes we'll see pickup trucks parked at the end of the road, and sometimes we have a little interaction with the people, I like to question where they're from, you know, if they're a resident, and a good number of them are not residents, they're from out of town. Well, I had heard some people tell me that the taxidermy, wildlife taxidermy from way over by the Masonic Traffic Circle, we're sending them there to shoot there, because that was a safe place to go shoot. So there's Kimball Pond. So, well, our next town forest meeting, which is first mail, I'll tell those guys again, and I'm sure it wouldn't take much to get them on board.
Okay.
I'd like to have a sign there myself, just to slow it down, if nothing else, like, just- It was unbelievable the difference it made at Stark Spawn.
Okay.
It was just like night and day.
Yeah. They put the legal, like, then.
And it, and it just, that was no hassle, the people just stopped.
Very good.
So.
Okay. I'll be looking forward to hearing back from you.
Yeah, we'll talk about the next town forest meeting, I'm sure it won't take much to get us on board.
Want to bring it back to the, back to the selectmen? Dave, do you first?
Um, I think we covered everything earlier, we just had the guy here with the library.
Okay.
We're gonna be doing a few things with Lynn on the next couple of meetings, so I think we're covered for now.
Okay. Seeing as anything that we have, any response on the, on the letter?